Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Johnny and Fanny Board Meeting. I'd like to ask everyone to stand up and pledge their flag.
United States of America, and to the Republic for its stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, without any bounds.
Thank you very much. The public address of this meeting pursuant to the Open Full of Meeting Act has been filed for in the following act, posted on the holding board and Borough Court's office, the email to the district attorney, and the courier post. Do we have a vote call, please?
Chairwoman Klee-Hammer?
Yes.
Mr. O'Callaghan?
Here.
Ms. Cusson?
Here.
Mr. Pachowski?
Mr. Benella?
Here.
Mr. Laverdy?
Here.
Mary Kapas?
Here.
Mr. Rineri?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
Ms. Dodds?
Here.
Mr. Royan?
Here.
Mr. Pettit?
Here.
And Mr. Knight?
Here.
All right. In motion on the floor to approve the minutes of the October 10th, do you have any questions on the minutes? There are motions to approve then?
There is a vote.
Mr. Benella and Ms. Laverdy, you all in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'm going to make a quick announcement. There were two other applications on the agenda for this evening. That one was for me, Toyota, and the other one was for Mr. Stantz for a lot line change, and they will not be being heard this evening. They have been rescheduled to the December meeting. This will be your only notice, so anyone who is here about those applications, please come back to the December meeting because you will not be renoticed by mail. Okay, we have open business resolution 1818. Mr. Royan?
Yes, this was a resolution regarding 3630 Davis Road Block 152 Lot 11.01. It was a permission of variance to permit a six-foot fence along a front yard property line where a four-foot is a maximum permitted. It's noted that this is a front property, so it essentially had two front yards, and the side of the six-foot fence will be permitted to be constructed as actually, in essence, a side yard.
Okay. In motion on the floor to approve the resolution as read?
Make a motion.
Mr. Benella?
Second.
Ms. Cusson, they have a vote call, please?
Chairwoman Klee-Hammer?
Yes.
Ms. Cusson?
Yes.
And Mr. Benella?
Yes.
Mr. O'Callaghan?
Yes.
Mr. Laverdy?
Yes.
Mr. Were you able to do this one? I can't remember. What was it for?
The fence, yes.
The fence, yes. Mr. Rineri?
Yes.
And Mary Kapas?
Yes.
And Mr. White, did you vote on it last time?
I think you did.
This was the fence, yeah.
And Ms. Dodds did not, correct. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Resolution 1819, Mr. Royan?
Yes, that's for 335 West East Sham Road Block 101, Lot 15. This was a bulk variance and permission to extend an existing shed an additional eight feet and a side yard bulk building to permit the construction and the addition within 1.58 feet of the property line where our ordinance provides a minimum of seven feet. I believe that was a pre-existing condition, and that's why the board acted.
Yep. Motion on the floor to accept the resolution as read?
I'll make a motion, a second.
Lucy Rineri, Mary Kapas, will we have a vote call, please?
Chairwoman Klee-Hammer?
Yes.
Ms. Cusson?
Yes.
Mr. Benella?
Yes.
Mr. Pachowski?
Oh, sorry, he's out.
Mr. O'Callaghan?
Yes.
Mr. Laverdy?
Yes.
Mr. Rineri?
Yes.
And Mary Kapas?
Yes.
And Mr. White?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have an application under New Business 18-08. This application is for site plan review for use of 109 East Ninth Avenue as a residential health care facility and adult daycare center. Good evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Is this a use variance?
No, we already considered that.
Yes, that was it. It says use.
It's a review. It's a review.
Before we begin, is Mr. White going to sit in for Scott?
Mr. Pachowski, yes.
Oh, okay.
Pachowski.
He's sitting for Stone.
Stone, and?
Oh, that's right.
There. For Mr. Stone and Mary, you can sit for Scott.
Pachowski. Yep.
Make your full word.
Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Daniel Bernstein. I'm attorney with Caserone Bernstein LLC, and we represent the developer Tapestry Running Meet. Before we begin, I do have a comment on Mr. Pettit's letter dated November 13. It refers to the application existing hotel to a health care facility and adult daycare. Application does not propose a health care facility, it's senior residential.
Okay.
In addition, since the two months that we last met, Tapestry has been looking thoroughly at the market, has been looking beneath in the area and what the site can do. And Tapestry, as we'll clearly explain later, intends to submit a phase-two application for development. We'll discuss a little later. Basically, it would be a separate unit for memory care. The fully unit would be separate construction, separate use, so you have to be here to do it again. You're aware of that, but we need to get this one done so we can get private, we can close on the building and start working on this whole thing. I'd like to introduce Tom LaSalle, who's principal of Tapestry. He's going to learn more in depth.
Thanks, Dan.
Questions? And we have on that side, just Michael Neiser here. He's testified before his previous case. They need to answer some specific questions we've seen raised by Mr. Royan.
Okay, Dan, we'll remove this safety. We do have a time. John, everybody, just want to give any testimony tonight? We're just going to do a group swearing-in, so if you raise your right hand, you swear affirm that testimony you're about to give this board tonight is truthful and accurate to best of your knowledge.
I do. Good evening. Thank you. Chairman?
Chairman and members, thank you for having us. It was beautiful night. We did not bring this from them, so as I said to some of you earlier, we get rain then snow, not snow that night, so this is new for us. Stan talked about, we learned a little bit in the last couple of months, so what we'd like to do tonight is show you the site plan for the existing building, which we would hope to get approved. We need to buy that building so that we can move through the rest of the design process, get it off the market, and be able to move forward. The new thing we learned about the need for memory care and getting away from the adult daycare, which didn't show up in the market as a need, will take some time. That's a licensed, you need a certificate of need. We need to, we'll have some stormwater issues to deal with, so that'll take some time to go through the process. Our hope would be to get both projects in the ground during the first two quarters of 2019. So what we'd like to show you tonight and hope to get approved is the site plan for the independent living, which will have home health services. And I think, I think those have been sent to you, so you have those. You know, Michael has some renderings of what we're thinking about for the exterior. The exterior has, these renderings have both old buildings in it. We're not being presumptuous that we're going to have them, but we want you to see what we have in mind and what, you know, where we're trying to go with this as we move down the road.
Just for the record, did you state your full name and you are the principal of Tapestry?
Correct. My name is Tom LaSalle, L.A.S.A.L.L.U.
Thank you very much, yes.
And I did give a card piece here, and I can give you my card. So the, our intent here is to take the existing hotel, and Michael goes, and he's done, and goes through the exact next. We're going to change the unit configuration. I imagine many of you have been in the hotel, may have stayed in the hotel. If you've ever been on the second floor, you know, you looked out at basically a wall, and there's equipment on the, we'll turn those into private balconies for those units so they'll become an amenity as opposed to a problem. We'll do the same with the roof over the meeting area in the building so that it gets to, you know, those units will become prime units instead of problems. We want to offer a list of amenities. The goal here is to provide more affordable housing for seniors, and I don't mean affordable in the definition that became subsidized, but just try to get in at or below anything that, you know, what's in the market for the seniors. This is for people who, they might be getting past wanting to live in their home, but they don't need assisted care or memory care. At the same token, in the building, we would provide services though, so if they need, they may need a little help, and if they, you know, they get a little help, and then as they age in place, we're able to provide more services. And then the, the goal to build the, it would be licensed as assisted living next door. We're thinking of focusing heavily on memory care. What we do in memory care that's a little different is we build small communities of memory care so that we can have different acuity levels. You know, what you don't want is your 90-year-old mother living with somebody who's 65 and has Alzheimer's. She's, that's a very different risk, so those are the things we're looking at. Michael, do you want to come on and walk through the plans? We can answer any questions you have. I'd like to start with the site plan for the existing, and then we can, we'll talk a little more. Now, understand the memory care is, you know, an idea at this point.
Conceptual at this point, Michael? Good concept.
I took, you know, basically be here to answer questions if you have any. You all have the plans for the application, but the intention is to basically repurpose this existing building. There's, the space on the first floor would be keeping dining room, keeping the kitchen area, repurposing the banquet room to multipurpose use and so forth, providing amenities for the residents on the upper six floors that are above the first floor there. As far as the site plan is concerned, we are basically keeping the parking. We're enhancing the accessible parking spaces because of the clientele, of course, and redoing the landscaping as well, and all of those things are pointed out in Mr. Pettit's letter of review.
Can I ask you one question to start off with? How many current units are there in the hotel?
165, something like that.
165, so you intend to reconfigure them in some way?
Right, right, so there would be fewer of them, 121, when we're, when we're done with that. So a lot of them are going to be, become two units, become one bedroom.
Some of those drawings you showed us before, I mean, I was, saw some of those drawings. And then, I guess another reason I'm asking that kind of question is, I'm not familiar with parking. I guess it's a different type of parking scenario.
Right.
And if, and if you intend to maybe build another building in the future, you know, once again, I don't think parking is as big of an issue, is that correct?
That's correct. There's virtually no one, none of the residents in the memory care would even drive. You would have staff needs there, and in the, in the existing building, the more independent living, there is no staffing requirements, but there is, some of the residents would be driving. So our intention would be ultimately one-to-one parking ratio for the existing buildings for the residents there, and then a 0.5.
So each unit gets one spot, is that right?
Right, then a half a parking space per unit for the memory care.
Which really ends up being guest parking for people visiting the independent. If you look at the, the site plan that has the idea of the memory care, the other thing that's very odd for that hotel is all of the parking, as you look at the plans on the right side, and the doors to the hotel were in front and on the left side.
You'd never do that in a hotel.
Well, we're going to, what was a service corridor that is the same width as that corridor that went out to the left side of the building. That will become finished corridor space, and we create an entrance out to the right where the parking is.
That's good.
So the idea then is that we pull the memory care towards the front, so the independent living would park in back, but they'll have access right at that place where the buildings connect. Now, prior to, if we move ahead, say for example, do the independent building without the memory care, we create an entrance there with, you know, clearly delineating as an entrance, and that will provide the access to that point, so the parking's much more convenient than it is today.
A signed parking or just open? Just a?
Tom, am I right in saying that you mentioned something about balconies?
If you look at the, I don't know if you've got a plan that really shows it, the lower level, the first level of the building is about 10 feet, it's about 20 feet wider, so you've got that, you know, you, as you look at the building, there's a parapet at that second level. Well, all those units on that second level are looking at the back of this and a roof and some air conditioning equipment in places, so what we'll do there is, we'll take that and create, probably put some either railing kind of detail cut into it at places or maybe replace the whole thing. We're still, I don't know what.
And that's, that's showing on the building elevations for the current application.
Just on the front of the building you're talking about?
On the front.
I see what it looks like on that second level.
It's on both sides, and then we create, those become very nice spaces. They're, they look like they're about 10 feet deep, up to the outside.
So they're going to be like sliding glass doors going down?
Yes.
And you have like a 10 by 12 little patio.
Nice. In San Diego?
What are your plans for, you have like a doorman on site or some kind of security?
No, we have, well, we've got staff, you know, there most of the time, but no, we wouldn't have a doorman.
Like law enforcement?
It would be a secure access.
Yeah.
And the, if we, I mean, it depends on, you know, if we do the whole thing as one, you've got 24-hour nursing staff and everything in the memory care, so we have some crossover in there that would give quite a bit of security, but it would be a secure building.
I just can, you know, my brother's in an apartment, it's an older apartment, most of them are elderly, they did have a doorman, and everybody got their key fobs, and the doorman's gone, and I was just wondering, because there's a lot of elderly people there, the doorman would help them in with their packages or whatever, you know, if they came in late at night, so I was just curious to see.
No, that's a good thought, you know, we'll look at that, and we really haven't gotten that far. This is, we've built a lot of full assisted care, memory care with the full staff, and we've built a lot of just apartment buildings. This is in between, so, you know, as we work through it, you know, that's a good comment, something for us to look at. You know, probably, you know, until like nine at night, doing something, really, it's almost a five to nine kind of event, I think, so the people have somebody helping them in the evening.
Stories.
Because the active staff is the rest.
How much do you think you're going to have there on the daily basis, Tom?
Well, in the, if, in the independent living, you would have the home health care staff, so we, we put an office in with home health care people, so they would be, you know, in that office, and what I can't answer is that's totally dependent upon the level of needs in the building, so less when we open, more as we mature.
Then you'll have like a kitchen staff for the dining areas, stuff like that?
Yeah, the full kitchen staff. We'll have more staff than the hotel at higher salves, and mostly full-time jobs. That's, that's the difference from the hotel. And we've built and owned and run hotels, so it's a stabler, higher-paying job, and a tough one to hire people for.
You want to have all three elevators operational?
No, actually, we have a lot for, because we'll turn the service elevator into probably more of a residential elevator.
Okay.
So you think, Mr. Stantz, you're adding an elevator?
Pardon?
No, there are four elevators.
She probably never saw one. It's back in the corner, it was purely for, it was real.
There's three elevators currently, and the fourth one would be in the new building.
New building, yeah. Yeah, now there's only three on the front. Yeah.
So just quick, back to parking again, so more staff, once again, does there's enough parking for what you need?
Yes. Remember, the staff aren't all there at once. You've got staff coming in, they need all the shifts.
I quick counted, it's about 130 spots. I quick counted.
Yes, that's, that's a, that's a, a pretty picture of the site plan. We're developing the plan in concept right now for the memory care, and it ends up being 149 or 150 parking spaces, so they, you know, 121 plus half of the memory care comes up to 149.
Well, I'm going to tell you about the plan.
Yeah, it's a great project.
I think it's a great project, it's probably one of the best projects, best, probably made in about 20 years. It would be good for, good for a lot of people, and probably create some jobs, and hopefully, at the end of the day, there'll be people coming in and out of our town. Hopefully, these people that live at Tapestry like pizza, we have about 10 pizza raves in town.
Notice that.
There's a pizza rave on every corner.
So are there any residents inquiring already because they know the idea or?
No, we haven't. It's been pretty quiet, you know, the, so we haven't gotten that far. You know, what, you know, these.
What's your feeder, what's your feeder program to get the residents? How does that work?
Well, we're going market into the general market. This is independent living, so you're, you're looking at, you know, the people are, they're independent, but they're not, you know, they're not like humans. They've got some issues, and they're trying to deal with that, so, you know, we'll, we'll just begin to market it, and the, you know, you don't go into the market until, probably in this case, you may be six months before you're ready to open, otherwise, the people have solved their problem some other way. But we have done all of our market studies to indicate there is a market. We've got a positive, you know, and that's how we came to you with different plan today. We've got a positive market study in independent living, a positive study on the need for memory care, a negative study on adult daycare.
Paige, you did your homework, and I think it's, I guess I think it's a great project, and you think you're, you're planning on having this turned over in six months?
What we're doing is, what we're doing now is go get a six-month loan, basically, to buy that hotel, so we'll be, we'll be trying to get it all done in six months.
What do you think the monetary scope of the project's going to cost?
I think it was a total, about 40, the two projects together are about 40, but yeah, roughly.
45 million?
45 million, yes. And the, no, we just found out today that we're going to have to do some watershed studies because we're impacting the site to the point, so.
Back in that corner.
Yeah, so it depends on how long it takes to do the work on that. Ideally, we'd like to start both projects at the same time. However, we were talking to lenders in New York today, and yesterday here, about, you know, the possibility that we might start the independent living and then bring that memory care on maybe third quarter, fourth quarter, or let the other one get open and start to fill up. So it, you know, we're, we're actually here early because we've got to get control of the building.
Right.
So some of our, we haven't answered all the questions that you're asking yet, and that's, you know, we'll come back to you, and we'd rather just tell you where we're at, how things are going, and have an interaction with you, work together to come to the right solution. We do, so the approval we're asking for tonight is really kind of temporary, but we need it in order to buy that, we can't get somebody to lend us money to buy that building if we don't really for sure we can at least convert that to the independent building.
Okay. So John, let me ask you something. So would the applicant, would we just be given a preliminary approval, we can have?
No, I don't. Preliminary and final for this phase.
Okay.
And if they go into the next phase, it'll be another application. That's sort of ended after.
And then the requested variances, they seem to be all pre-existing?
Yes.
Except the one for the continued use of the tower sign floodlights?
Are you keeping the sign, the big pulsar?
Well, yes, we'd like to keep it because it's smart, expensive to take it down, but that's the question.
Interesting, because they can also.
Okay, so that's pre-existing, okay.
I've never seen a signed pool quite like that.
And they already obtained their use here.
Maybe they turned to a theme park. I think we would probably try to see if we can't sign the sign as opposed to shining a giant light on it, but, right, for today, we're just staying with what we have.
Have you had a chance to review our, our letter?
Yes.
You have any issues with the comments in there?
No, we have.
Do you have a copy of that letter?
Yeah.
I don't hear it. You know, at this point, we're going to keep it.
Should we?
I don't think so. No, I don't think so.
Yeah, if you agree on all, we can just refer that into a resolution.
Yeah, there, we did list four checklist items that were submitted, and the only one of the items is eight.
Yep.
And if there are any conditions or danger restrictions that affect the property?
Let's move around a little.
Okay. I believe the other three, the work can grant a waiver for, because straightforward, and again, the balance of our letter, I think, is pretty straightforward, we can work out the details, but there's nothing significant in there. I would ask, you're talking about stormwater management issues when we come back for the memory care. Why do you believe that would be required?
Well, if we're disturbing a certain amount of the site, you know, which is the new addition, and that, it may not be.
Stormwater will come into play if you add four acre of the turbines.
Which I don't believe.
Which I don't believe, and it's almost the same. We're disturbing an acre of land.
We're disturbing, but our concern is we're disturbing an acre of land. But we would, we'll work with you to not have to do that.
Yeah, I don't.
We're telling you, we may have an issue.
Because it's already appropriate.
We just have.
It's currently appropriate right now.
And the building's, either 1.1 acre, we may have a smaller building inside.
We just haven't calculated at all how, yeah, run through it.
I would suggest, we talked before, you're too far into designing something that may not be necessary.
Yeah, well, we would appreciate that.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with what you're saying, it's, that disturbing doesn't mean anything because it's already parking up.
Well, trust me, I don't want to.
You don't want to do it either, yeah. If we can waive it, I mean, I'm sure it's.
I don't know that you can waive it, because you can help us figure out.
We can figure out a way around. Are there any other questions from members of the board? At this point, Tom, I'd like to open up the hearing to members of the public. If there's anyone in the public wishing to speak on this matter, and this matter only, please come forward and state your name and address if you're heard.
Thank you.
Good evening, Charlie, how are you?
Good evening, board. Charlie, my time, 2237, wrote, I just need one clarification, and listening to this, it's not a health care facility, so I just need that understanding complete. It's just going to be residential, adult residential, or senior residential?
Senior residential.
Senior residential, that's all. I'm crossing out right over there and make sure I know what it is. Thank you.
Very well, from the public, wish someone to speak on this matter? I entertain a motion to close the full course of the meeting.
Motion to close the whole meeting.
Mr. O'Callaghan and Mr. Benella on favor?
Aye.
Okay. At this point in time, Mr. Royan?
Yes, so the application today is preliminary, a final site plan approval for the plan submitted to reconform the previous hotel into a senior residential living center. The requested variances, we can outline in the resolution. I won't go over them now because they're all pre-existing, but the resolution would reflect the continuance of the same. You would also be voting on a waiver, a, from the requirements of 33155.1, of some requirements regarding floor plans for buildings exceeding 40 feet in height, and having a sketch for every floor, and I think there was a, what was the other one? Number 27. Anything else that might have been required?
I guess a general catchall.
General catchall, that you're, you'd be granting a waiver for those requirements.
Now, can I ask a quick question, I'm just curious about 23, John, where it says the buildings would have a floor plan for each story indicating fire access. I'm assuming before they get a certificate of occupancy, they'd have to have a fire.
That'll be reviewed by the construction code official.
So that would cover?
Yeah, I'm not sure why that's a checklist requirement, because this board has no authority over it. You know, that, that's up to your construction code official.
So they wouldn't be able to get a certificate of occupancy without that fire?
They won't be able to get one, right? That would demonstrate, you wouldn't pass the code. Without that, that's straight, you wouldn't pass the code.
And regarding the needs and restrictions, they, they are unaware once, if there are any, I'm sure as a condition you would provide them to the board as far as there are any extra. I'm sure there's no restrictions that would impede your development.
That would be set forth in the title.
Right. All right, so, and I believe they indicated that the other items in John's letter, landscaping plans, et cetera, it looks like there was a landscaping plan attached to it somewhere that they go, they'll work along with John to, for any discrepancies or any additions that may have to be worked out as this development moves along. So just need a motion to approve those conditions, the bulk variances and the waivers regarding section three, three, one, fifty-five.
I make a motion to approve the bulk variance and everything else that's listed.
Motion by Mary Potash, seconded by Mr. Offaly, roll Potash to his.
Cherry and Clayhammer?
Yes.
Ms. Clushen?
Yes.
Mr. Benala?
Yes.
Mr. Offaly?
Yes.
Mr. Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Rannieri?
Yes.
Mr. Potash?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
And Ms. Dodds?
Yes.
All right, congratulations, we look forward to your project and.
Thank you, just before we go, so to meet some of the other faces, because we'll be coming back, Chris Glum, Chris is the CEO of our management company, so Chris is, would be here a lot. Dick Beanoff, who was all of our development, vice president of development, and oversees construction, so those two with us, you met Jack last time.
Yeah, Jack, Mr. Bray, yeah.
So Jack's my partner and another principal of the company, senior principal.
Wow. Jack, somebody who always has to be first.
We just want to apologize, it's been too easy, I know it's very, it's reputation will be very difficult.
You know, we've been through, we've built everything from monasteries to casinos.
You've seen, you've gone through it all.
We've been through a lot, you know, the toughest thing to build is a church. Have you ever done a church in your community? All the neighbors hate them, because all those people come in to park. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And obviously they.
Yeah, yeah, I would like to know.
I have a similar part for today.
All right, thank you, guys. Oh my God, Thanksgiving, I guess I will see you again too soon. Are you gonna be around or? All right, well, probably some stranger, I would be drunk for a stage, so we guys can give a talk. Check it out. Take care. Take care. Chris, buddy, take care, happy Thanksgiving.
Trying to put me on. So I sit in to see.
Nice to meet you. And you're recording?
Take care. Take care. Chris, buddy, take care, happy Thanksgiving.
Trying to put me on. So I sit in to see.
Nice to meet you. And you're recording?
Take care. Take care. Chris, buddy, take care, happy Thanksgiving.
Trying to put me on. So I sit in to see.
Nice to meet you. And you're recording?
Take care. Take care. Chris, buddy, take care, happy Thanksgiving.
Trying to put me on. So I sit in to see.
Take care. Take care. Chris, buddy, take care, happy Thanksgiving.
Trying to put me on. So I sit in to see.
Nice to meet you. And you're recording?
Take care. Take care. Chris, buddy, take care, happy Thanksgiving.
Trying to put me on. So I sit in to see.
Nice to meet you. And you're recording?
Take care. Take care. Yeah. And I'll, I'll tell you about, great project. Thank you. Take care. Thank you. 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 At this point in time, I'd like to open up. What, open up the meeting to public, anyone wishing to speak on any matter whatsoever, this is good welfare, come up to the microphone, state your name and address and be heard. All right, so you go on in the public portion is wishing to speak, I'll entertain a motion to close the public portion.
Motion to close the public portion.
Mr. Offaly and Ms. Clushen on favor?
Aye.
Okay, on a real quick note, I did have a last conversation with a gentleman named Michael and I've been talking to him probably over the past six months, he's been looking for a building in town, uh, to open up like a sports training facility, he was looking at the property across from the floor, like I said, it was an empty lot, and that didn't seem to work out for him. He is now looking, Keith, I believe he spoke to you, I gave you your phone number, and he's looking at what used to be the Powerhouse Gym. And that used to be, for anyone who doesn't know that, that actually used to be a place called Mega Sports Center, and it became the gym, and what he's looking to do is to put like some indoor soccer fields in, some indoor batting cages for, you know, be it adults, you know, kids, whatever, and turn it into a sports complex for adults and kids, so I think he's gonna be, I'm talking to Keith as far as asking what he needs to do to move the project forward, but have you had any conversation with him?
Yes, I did, I marked that out.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's on the type of use he's indicating and what comes before the board for the use there.
Yeah, so like I said, it was that use before, it worked out very well, there's plenty of parking there, and we, we used to have parties there for the kids who knew our why, we had a lot of functions, it's a, it's a pretty big space. The bathrooms were actually just redone by Powerhouse, but I, I belonged to the gym at the time, they just redid the bathrooms and the showers probably a year or so ago, Keith, something like that?
Yes.
Year?
Yes, it's a sort of something.
Yes, yeah, so.
Without the proper permits, but yes.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Corporate enforcement action was taken and they didn't get any.
But anyway, the fixtures and things in there are relatively new, and so hopefully we'll be calling the force in the next, he, I believe, would like to open in the spring if at all possible, so hopefully we'll be having Mike come in front of us in the next couple of months and we can get that building filled up. So that would be a nice thing. Have we talked, I talked to Mr. Bach yesterday, Mary, do you have, Keith, do you have any update on the meeting with PCNG, do you?
I had something, yesterday I had a great meeting with the, I went to the lake and I was able to have a meeting with the director of land use for the DEP. So she was great, explained what we were trying to do and how I phrased the whole conversation was the PCNG was blaming you guys that you, they couldn't get something done, of course the DEP said, we'll get it done, which was good, we'll see, but, you know, they, she took the information, we looked on a quick Google map to see what it was, obviously they realized that it was something that they would have to approve, but they said that they thought it was something that, you know, I showed how we had put sidewalks all along East Sham Road and this was the last section that wasn't done, I explained, I believe, I believe our position is to do whatever, whatever we can to get that a little bit done, even if it means a cost sharing on the borough side, so the borough has to do some part of the application or some part of even the cost to get it done. And, you know, they were, they were very nice, they actually, you know, the three or four people there, it was actually the director, so it was her, she was in charge of that division. But they're just on a note, just so you know, the state, you know, we always criticize the state being behind, but one of the things that the DEP is doing is they're going everything electronic. Joyce and I always get mad when the state wants original signatures, they want original and everything, so the DEP says they want to start their own plans electronically, they're gonna save, they're trying to paperless as much as they could, so. The only difficulty they say is that the amount of staff that they're consulting, it sounds like that's the question of the sense of government.
The courts are going to that now, a lot of the complaints are filed electronically.
But we're still dealing with original signatures.
Some things, yes.
Some things are still, you know, the right hand is.
Especially in taxes.
Okay.
You know, you file a senior citizen application with senior deduction and you have to keep the original form, some of them are thirty years old, and it seems so ridiculous to have to keep them.
But it was good, so the next step for us would be to get that next meeting, PCNG was down there, none of the people, I didn't see any of the ones that were here at the meeting, but the next meeting will be maybe with the county engineer, with our borough engineer, even the rep from the DEP maybe, to really take a quick look at it and see what it'll tell. It was very clear that the work can be done, the question is.
I just want to be a portion.
We knew that, we knew that, they were just, they were trying to do it.
And they almost slowed down their application, but of course they made it clear that any application, you must have the property owners, the borough could be the applicant, but you need the property owner's consent. And the last thing, just to talk about that, I did mention that, if everyone knows, we aren't looking at putting sewer systems into the three streets, Sunset, Sunnybrook and Evergreen, because the state is, has a program to remove septic systems, and we would need an easement through that exact property. So the DEP, they understand that that was going for them too, so it might be a good thing for the borough to do everything kind of at once, one application.
Just don't tell them.
Yeah, you don't have to. So we'll see. Uh, they, if you look at a map, there's actually a pump station behind the apartment buildings. We call it the East Sham Pump Station, they have some letter for it, I don't know if you know the letter for it, but I call it the East Sham Pump Station, we just have to get to it, but we would need an easement, and PCNG has already done all the topography, they've done all the studies, they've done everything, I don't know if you guys remember, they did say they'd be willing to give that to the borough to help us out, so that was about it, we were pretty good, I mean, I think we're, we knew, I think, that we were gonna have to work with PCNG, the question is, how much are they gonna work with us to finish this project?
Well, I made that communication, because I really.
Are we gonna check on that county meeting, the engineer?
Yeah, well, you understand, the, the state kind of shuts down for the week of the legacies of the house, so hopefully next week everyone comes back. And next week, next Saturday, we lose them again, hopefully in December.
Are we still going to have them on the agenda in December, PCNG? Do you have any idea?
I don't, I don't. They asked to be on.
Yeah, they did.
We haven't had that meeting yet, why are we gonna have one again?
Yeah, very particular.
Wait till they're ready, for sure.
Yeah, if we don't have that meeting, I don't, I'm gonna, I'm gonna feel the same way, so, I'm thinking for myself, I haven't, I'm not gonna just speak too soon.
Okay, I haven't heard from anybody.
Yeah, I haven't answered. So these two will be on next, now, I did speak to Candace also, remember Candace was who's working for us for the redevelopment, now she said she would be contacting us again and get back on this, I, I want to impression that she wanted to be here in December, is that?
She, she did, but then we looked at, today we looked at the cost of the postage.
So we might want to push it back.
Because we have to send all the people in that zone, which I believe is between two and three hundred?
I think it was almost three hundred.
By certified now, it's over, that's over two thousand dollars.
It was over two thousand dollars in certification.
Kind of a good time to.
About six dollars a letter?
Six dollars and forty-seven, so.
Yeah, six, forty.
So, because we didn't budget that postage and Joyce spends a lot of money on the clerks all.
And also in January, reorganization.
Yeah, so then we keep pushing things forward.